Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, meeting of Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, to order. Rule call.
Rose.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Brandon.
McNally.
Here.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Okay, um, if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm terrible tonight, aren't I? We'll get that later.
Do you think Tom is having an active...
Oh, no, just... Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Alrighty, um...
I'm terrible tonight.
I was gonna say, Lisa, proof of posting, but we've got to wait here. Make sure the meeting has been properly posted. We talked about changing the order.
Yeah.
Does anybody care to make a motion to that effect?
I think we have to prove that it was properly posted before we can do that.
Okay. Has the meeting been properly posted, Lisa?
I'll take care of it, Lisa. Thank you. I'll take care of it.
Cambridge Post Office, hometown news and the Village website.
Okay, thank you. So that's taken care of.
I would make a motion to move item eight, Alpha A, the 2020 audit presentation by Hawkins Ash, up to now, so before public appearances.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay. Would the auditor from Hawkins Ash, please, join the dais here and introduce yourself.
Thank you for moving me up. I'm Monica Howser from Hawkins Ash CPAs. I am your partner and director. So, I'm just gonna go very, very briefly. I just did a presentation to the Finance Committee, and so just kinda wanna talk general to the board. We did the audit virtually last year, in 20... For the 2020 audit in 2021, we were able to come in person. Came here April 7th to the 9th, did the work, issued the report in mid to late June. So, everybody should have received copy of... copies of the reports if they wanted them. We issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which that's our job as the auditor to give an opinion on that. As far as findings, nothing new this year. We had the same four findings as last year. Material audit adjustments, segregation of duties, preparation of financial statements, and actual expenditures over budget. So, again, those are all repeat. We talked at the Finance Committee about maybe being able to get rid of some of the material audit adjustment one by cutting down on the entries that we're doing as auditors. So, then we had, we issued a smaller booklet that contained some management advisory comments, and just wanna talk to the full board on that. We just talked at the committee level as well. One of the comments was account reconciliations. So, we initially issued that comment in 2019, was repeated for 2020. Something turnover in position. So, that's something that Chrissy will be working on, is getting those reconciliations done. Then we had a recommendation on cash receipts process. We've talked through that. Some improvements have been made in that area. And then payroll, making sure somebody else was involved in approving that process, and that has been done as well. So, is there any questions or anything more specific that you want me to cover to the full board?
I have one. Going back to page four, when you have your... Can you just explain to us what this paragraph means, as far as this board?
Yep. So, GASB standards, Government Accounting Standards, say that an entity prepares a set of financial statements, the auditor comes in and gives an opinion on those. Now, in reality, most auditors prepare the financial statements because either there's not enough personnel to do it, or lack of ability to be able to do that. So, we prepare the financials, but then we put an opinion on it to say that they're fairly stated. There's no material adjustments that need to be done to these statements, in our opinion.
So, nothing has come to your attention? Our accounts are as represented?
Yep.
And everything has been taken care of and it's all in order?
Yes. And as we go through the process, if we find entries, adjustments that need to be done, we typically do those. Some clients don't wanna make any adjustments to their books, you know, and if it's over a certain dollar threshold, then we have to report that. But, in this case, if we find an adjustment, we wanna get things corrected, so we make the adjustment. So, the numbers that you have are correct.
Alright.
Did want to point out was how much we were over budget from last year.
Okay. Yep. So, in our budget to actual comparison schedule, our budget was 1,191,000. We actually spent 1,345,000. So, we are over budget 154,000. Okay? We don't do budget amendments traditionally. You don't have to, you just get the finding if you don't do them. But, some of that over expenditure was covered by over revenue. We got some COVID grants we didn't budget for. We also had expenses for those. We got expenditure restraint payments that we hadn't budgeted for. So, some of it's covered by revenue, but not all of it. Did that cover it, Eric?
Yeah, so then the grand total was about 80,000.
Yeah.
That we were short, because we were also under on our revenues.
This is, you're talking expenditures now.
Expenditures were over budget, and revenues were over budget, 62,000. So, the net of those two gets down to about 80,000.
Alright.
So, that money would have come out of General Fund, our reserves. Which, we do have money in reserves. It was 20... Did you see?
210,580 is what we have in unassigned fund balance, where that's available to be spent.
And then what was the percentage last year? So, how we changed year over year?
Yep. Okay. So, we take that unassigned fund balance as a percentage of our total General Fund expenditures. In 2019, that percent was 27.5%. In 2020, that dropped down to 15.6%. So, we ate up about 103,000 of fund balance in 2020.
Which was not replenished by anything.
Yep.
Just gone.
So, a couple years of that, we will have zero fund balance.
The 80,000 expenditures that were over, roughly, where did that come from?
Um, so, COVID grant was a lot of it. So, then the COVID expenditures were in the general government area.
Okay.
In the public safety inspections was over budget by about 45,000. So, there's a couple of different types of inspections that are done. Those are both over. A big chunk of it was TIF incentive payments. So, just, when we budget, make sure we know what those payments are actually gonna be.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you for your service, and we appreciate the report and your conclusions. Have a good after... or good evening.
Please get home safe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Monica.
Yeah. I'm gonna move back on now to public appearances. Ms. Laura Payne, Jefferson County Supervisor.
Thank you for having me. Like Mark said, I am Laura Payne. I am the County Board Supervisor for Jefferson County, representing the small portion of Cambridge that's in Jefferson County and is... And most of the town of Oakland. And so, I was just asked to come to give you a few updates on things that are going around town that impact our citizens. So, the first one I wanted to talk about was the Cambridge Area Senior Resource Network. It's a mouthful. Kate McGinnity, that you probably know, is the Dane County Board Supervisor for Cambridge. And she and I are co-chairs of this group. And this group was formed, if you're not familiar with it, to come up with a survey for senior citizens to take, see where we're lacking in our services to them, as well as preparing a senior directory for different services that are provided in the area for the seniors. And so, we are done with the survey. We had some great results. You may have... Did Kate talk to you about that in the past?
She was just here, talked a little bit.
Okay. Well, um, so we had good information for that, and one of the items was to have a directory, which we had already planned on doing, so that worked out well. So, we're in the process of finalizing that. That should be finalized in September, the actual content. And then, I'm gonna be working with a graphic designer to format it, get the directory all together and printed, and then we'll have them available to the citizens, senior citizens, who would like them. And so, also at our September meeting, we're gonna go over our mission statement. So, Mark and Lisa have come to these meetings before, so you're welcome to come again. And so, we'll be talking about a mission statement of where we're gonna move forward from this, once we're done with the directory. We've kind of completed the task that we had set to achieve. So, we'll be working on that, see where we want to go with the group. Let's see, what else? And the other item that wasn't our original intent, but it worked out very well. We established this program called Computer Buddies through RSVP of Dane County. Diana Jost is the person in charge of that. And that's a program that senior citizens are connected with elementary school kids, mostly third or fourth graders. And they're basically modern-day pen pals, where you're going on the computer. And so, we established that this year. It was a great success. And so, we're gonna have that program again through the elementary school. And Kate and Diana actually set this up for this year in Deerfield as well, since it worked out successfully in Cambridge. It's a program that's throughout Dane County already. It just hadn't been in our area. So, if you know anybody that would like to participate, feel free to contact me or Kate. Lisa will have her information, or even the school. So, that's about all I have for that program. I'm also involved with the Friends of the Connector Trail. Kate McGinnity is the chair of that. I'm just on the board. And we're working on the second phase now of connecting Cam Rock with the Glacial Drummond area. We are in the middle of constructing Phase One, and that should be completed at the end of September or so. We did have a fundraiser naming of the trail, Phil Van Vulcanberg Trail. And you may know him. He's kind of a local celebrity in the biking world, and he's from Cambridge. So, we... Some of you may have come to that. We had a fundraiser and the groundbreaking at the winery on August 1st, and that was really a great success. We had about a couple hundred people. And we raised some money to help build the trail. And so, we're just continuing working on the second phase of that. And let's see, what else we have? So, oh, I just wanted to go over a few things that are happening at the county in Jefferson County that may impact all of you. So, you all were very kind to allow Jefferson County to build a communication tower. So, that is constructed, and the internet access is operational, as... That's my understanding. And we are in the process of constructing the 911 system, and that should be completed in the fall. Let's see, what else?
And that went off without any problems, any complications?
No, everything went really well. It was done on time, so we were able to get the grant money. So, we really appreciate everybody moving so quickly with that. But, when you're able to get a grant like that, you really need to take advantage of it. So, it was really great. So, I don't have any statistics on how many people are using it yet, but we could probably get that from the company, since, you know, they don't... They don't contract through the county itself. We... Our propos... The county is proposing to do some road construction in 2022 on Highway A, from just south of... That goes into Lake Mills. South of where the construction ended last year, where they took out a couple curves in the road. And then, that's north of 18, so pretty close to where the city is, all the way down south of 12. So, that might impact some people. But, that road does need some work. So, they'll probably be doing that. We are also going to have extensive courthouse renovations. And we just approved that at the county level, and that will... We're still getting construction drawings. Bidding... Bids will go out in the winter, and then we'll probably start in the spring at some point. And so, that'll be extensive renovations, but the courthouse will remain open during that time. So, that's definitely needed at this point. And then, the last thing I had was, of course, you're all doing that too, at the municipality level, but we're starting the redistricting process for... To look at the census data and see if we need to redistrict some of the areas, so all the districts have the same, roughly the same amount of citizens within it. So, the county will be working with all the municipalities. So, I assume if you needed something from Jefferson County, they'll reach out to you. You can talk to them about that. Have you done that, Lisa?
We're getting some emails from them, keeping us updated.
Okay, good.
Wonderful.
So, I looked at the data, and it just looks like the Jefferson County side in the village, the population went down from 109 to 99. So, just a small decrease in that. I don't have any information from Dane County statistics. But, we'll be working on that, and that is all I have, unless you had any questions for me.
Thank you.
I have one question, Laura. I had heard that a gentleman is putting up a pretty good size residential development on A and 18. Do you know where that is on that corner?
Hmm, no, I have not heard about that. A and 18?
Yeah.
It would have to...
Have to be to the north, or I would call it north.
Yeah, the town, like the northeast corner. There's some houses in the northwest.
That's right.
And on the southeast, there's the trailer park.
Yeah. It's obviously between the trailer park and Highway 18. But, it's farmland. I just didn't know, you know, the size of it and where at on that corner, that quadrant it was gonna go, so...
I have not heard about that. I'm not on the planning and zoning, and it hasn't come to the full board.
Okay.
But, I will look into that and get back to you. I will.
I'm just curious, because it's number of homes and...
You gotta get sewer and water out there then, too.
Yeah.
I would assume so.
Sound the bulk one.
First, yeah. And they'll ask about it. They'll bring it to us.
Well, we don't have city water. We have wells in Oakland, but we do have sewer.
If you're putting a development in, that's the time they need to hook up the water.
Any information you can get?
Yeah, I'll get that to you. I'll ask about that this week.
Okay, alright. Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Payne.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming by. We'll see you again here in the future.
Yes.
Are there any other public appearances? Come on up, sir.
Nick Moss, dancing go. Great to see you all tonight.
Yeah, you get two minutes here, Nick, so what?
Well, I got a question for you. So, I didn't see anyone with a two-minute timer on her.
I'm sorry.
And that was about over... No, I'm not complaining. You definitely deserved all that time, for sure.
Yes.
And so, I'm not sure if you can reasonably restrict me to two minutes when there wasn't a timer on someone else in the public appearance? But, if you're just trying to use the rules to suppress what I'm trying to say, by all means.
She wasn't invited guest on the agenda.
She's on the public appearances. I tried to become invited guest with Public Agenda on Friday. I emailed you. I also emailed Mr. Brunet. I also had a conversation with Mr. Brunet yesterday about my intentions to be an agenda item.
And I was going... We close at 1 o'clock on Friday.
You did email me last night at 5:30 in response to other aspects of my email. And so, I'm assuming that either you didn't read the whole email, or maybe this was intentional.
I'm gonna ask that we just go back. What do you have here, Nick?
I have four questions that I've been trying to get answered the last couple days. And that's, I'm not trying to hash this out here. But, this is information that I would like from my attorneys, to give context to people who are not involved. There's a bike path being built. Big fan of it. I have one of your posters in my building. I've donated to it. I want it built, 100%. But, we had issues where we protested on the CSM.
Is that number one? I wanna write down your questions.
Okay, so, my actual literal questions, that was the context. My actual little question is, why weren't we notified of construction beginning on our property? And how was our refusal to sign viewed as anything other than disapproval of the project? Does anyone wanna answer? And I can take, we're not gonna answer to, that...
We would take it under advisement, and then we can get you a response back.
Cool. That'd be great. And also, I've emailed these three times to her, and I think once two as well. So, I can just go ahead and email them to you all again.
But, it's good that the whole board gets to hear your questions.
Why were we pressured to sign a false document if it's not actually a prerequisite of construction? So, we were asked to sign a CSM that we all know is fake. We were actually pressured to do so under the guise that it was a prerequisite for construction. We refused to sign it. You guys went ahead and did the construction anyways. So, that's something that we would like an explanation of. Also, we wanna know if it's mandatory or not to post building permits for construction within the village. And we'd like to know where the permit for this project is, and if we can see it. Because we clearly not one permit, not one posted, and I did not get one from my conversations with Lisa. And then, my final question of my four-pack here is, given everyone involved knows the CSM on file is and never was accurate, why has it been used as a basis for more construction? And has an accurate CSM been filed? If not, why not? And I have copies of the CSM that we believe to be on file, as well as the CSM that we believe to be accurate. This one is from 2015, which is the one that we believe is on file. If we are incorrect, we'd love to be incorrect. Here's one from 2018 that has a different outlay.
I just gotta... Is that for the vineyards?
This is a CSM from the vineyards, specifically relating to the construction of the bike path.
Where does it have the bike path?
Yeah, I know.
Well, it depends on if you've ever updated the CSM, which is one of my questions. So, if you never update the CSM, you have a bike path running where our property used to end? And then it cuts here. I'd like to point out that you do actually have a public utilities easement here. But, that is different than a public use bike path easement, which complicates the issue here. If you did, in fact, update the CSM...
Can I share this one?
Yes, please, absolutely. I can email this to all you guys and get their... If you did update the CSM, you would have this, which you have going around our building. And this is the one that we would have liked to have seen, because not only is it accurate...
Right. And that's what one was discussed at one point. Because you were concerned about how close people got to the building and...
Well, you know, this isn't about the northern path here.
Okay.
So, this is about the construction in that 50-feet zone right there.
Yep.
And our big concerns is that we felt that our refusal to sign a CSM, that we knew to be false, as do multiple of you, was an implicit denial of our permission to go ahead with the project on our property. I may not need permission. And, you know, one of the things about being good neighbors is talking. And one of my questions was, why didn't anyone just let us know that this construction was gonna happen? Because if you had come to us despite us not signing the CSM, and said, "Hey, Nick, we gotta work around you here, and we're gonna go ahead and do it anyways", I would have been like, "You know what? That's great, but you should really file that CSM, because it'll help with other things you're working on here."
Okay.
This isn't on the agenda. I will... Nobody has asked anybody to sign any CSM. I have been in discussion with you guys. We have sent maps. It's an ongoing discussion.
I disagree. I think he was asked to sign a CSM. That he, I think he also said it was inaccurate, and he refused to sign.
Right. Not by us.
We all provide the current accurate one. That's correct.
I never asked you to sign a CSM, but...
And, you know, all this confusion is what I was trying to leave you with my emails.
And we have conversations ongoing with our attorney too, so...
Alright, I'm gonna conclude this.
And I responded, we will be in touch. We want to sit down and talk.
Alright. We can bring this back if you are interested in coming back again, Nick. It'd be a couple weeks. We can talk this through and have more time to get into some of the specifics.
I'll definitely be back. You know, my usual habits of coming to these meetings when able. I did miss you guys with the birth of my child. Believe you me, I will be here to watch what's going on, because you guys get busy when you're left unsupervised. So, I would really like some responses, if possible. I can also literally take "we will not answer" as a response, like that's fine. But, I would like anything, because when...
Acknowledgement.
Yeah, because when you don't say anything, it sends the wrong message.
I got it. I agree.
And I've tried to be a good corporate citizen here. I'm gonna continue to try to do that. But, it's hard to keep investing millions and millions and millions of dollars here and have people just show up and boulder my trees, so... Thanks a lot. I appreciate your time. Thanks for not putting me on the table, guys.
Alright. Is there anybody else that is here for, with public appearance? Okay, I'm gonna move along. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda, including President... Let's see.
The Village Board Minutes.
Yeah, Village Board Minutes, Energy Subcommittee Minutes, and Water and Sewer Committee Minutes from August 17th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Carries? Alright, we're gonna move into reports. President's report. We've got a number of things here tonight. There was one item that I was trying, still trying. I haven't reached a gentleman. And this is regarding Attorney Bailey. She's gonna be retiring on doing a lot of legal, at least as far as helping us. She's still gonna be doing estates and probate work. The person I wanted to talk to, we have swapped calls. We just haven't been able to connect yet, so... Gonna move on. Library Board. Ted.
We had election of officers, and that was about it for the last Library Board meeting.
Okay. Alright. They're all good?
All good.
Alright. Okay. Move that alone. We'll move on. Audit and Finance.
So, we just met before this meeting. Monica gave the same spiel, but in more depth, for Audit and Finance. Besides our audit, we discussed ARPA funds, which are also on the... One of the items is on the unfinished business. But, we just discussed general, what to do with the money we're getting from ARPA.
For bringing this up.
That's about it.
Okay. Alright. Any questions, Eric? Okay. Village Office Updates. Ms. Mullen.
A lot of different things going on that we're working on. We debt grant has been submitted for the hotel going in on Main Street, that we will be the... We apply on behalf of the entity, and the funds flow through us to them. So, that has been submitted. Intervener grant has been submitted, which we'll talk about later. Water maintenance plan, staff has been working hard on that. That was approved by Water and Sewer yesterday. There is a lot going on with the bike trail, the vineyards, working out issues on those, working with attorneys. The solar panel project, some staffing employment things. So, a lot of different things going on, some of which are on the agenda coming up.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay. Let's move on. Chrissy. Bills.
First round was $21,806.11. And the second round that was done today is $5,530. First round was $21,806.11, and the second round that was done today is $5,538.77 for a grand total of $27,344.78.
I'll make a motion to clear the bill and set them up.
I'll second.
All right. Motion, a second. Discussion. Questions for Chrissy? Okay, looks good. Chrissy, what do you say we have a roll call on this one?
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Brianic.
Yes.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay. Let's move on to new business. We have the proposed development by Westgate Partners. And did you, I forgot to mention this to you, Lisa, did you see anything that came in today from?
I was not in the office.
Yeah, okay.
I did send a draft letter to committee members, or board members last night. I was not in the office today at training.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't print it off, okay.
Is there an amendment?
There is. It's just a slight, if you will, a codicil. I got a call from Todd Schultz, and he tried to reach Lisa, and she was gone. And then he tried to reach Matt, and he was out. And what he wanted in there was two parts. One is that the village would be interested in pursuing an annexation request, looking at an annexation request from the developer. And then along with that, that we would be looking at a TIF for this project. I talked, those both we have talked about. I talked it over with Matt. Matt incorporated that into a new agreement. So you've seen the old one. It's just, it has those two provisions.
Not in agreement, a letter.
A letter, a letter. But he did that. Then I called up, because I was out, I called Mr. Schultz, and he was okay with that. So I talked with Matt. He got it done. I just didn't bring a copy. And if we have the old one, I guess I would ask that we approve it, knowing that there's been two modifications made to it, because we're going to be stuck here. We don't meet for two weeks. But those are the two changes that were made.
So are we having, can we discuss this now?
Sure.
Oh, are we having any attorney look over this letter before?
Yeah, Matt.
The attorney, that's who drafted it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm used to hearing Mary. It's Matt. Matt's the attorney?
Matt, that's what Murphy does.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
Yep, he is the attorney. He drafted it.
I mean, I don't feel comfortable until I read it with the changes, but.
You want me to run upstairs and print it out?
Yeah, it would help, because we're kind of up against a timetable, all right.
But that gets it started.
Yeah.
But then going down the road, all I say is.
Yeah. Why don't we, yeah, can somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move Item 9 Alpha, Cambridge Deerfield Players Request for American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA funds, Audit and Finance recommendation. I want to move that up to where we are now, so we can.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right.
Since she's gone, the Cambridge Deerfield Players, this came up a while ago. They sent a letter to us requesting funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. We're going to get like $166,000 from the federal government. And they had sent a letter dated May 25th requesting $4,396.12 to cover their administrative costs that were lost due to COVID. So the administrative costs were paying for the rent of the space and the heat and electricity and whatnot. So in Audit and Finance, we discussed whether this should be paid out or not. So far, we have received half of our money, so $80,000. We have until 2024 to actually spend the money. And there's a whole slew of recommendations of how to go about doing this, and what projects are covered and what projects aren't. We had quite a bit of discussion about what precedent this sets. We were in agreement that we want to help them, but what sort of, just because they sent a letter, now do we have to pay them, and when do we pay them? And, I'm sorry, Ted, can you hear me? I want to make sure.
I can hear you.
Okay, I was talking this way. So the recommendation that we made was to pay this out, their $4,396.12, with the caveat that we'll pay half now. We want to reach out to Deerfield and see, are they actually contributing to this as well? Because it seems unfair to Cambridge to have to pay for all of their lost revenues and things. Have they applied for other opportunities? There's the National Endowment for the Arts has a lot of money through ARPA that they could apply for. So we'll pay to help them stay afloat for now. And then, once we get some more data from whomever, if we don't get anything by December 31st, we would pay out the remainder, whichever comes first.
There was no caveat to my motion. My motion was to pay it in full. Was it?
Okay.
I lifted it.
Okay, that was, okay, then the recommendation was to pay it in full now, right?
Right, but then you bring, you know, we recommend that to the board, and the board discusses it, so.
Yeah. So that was the recommendation was to, sorry about that. I got confused. Recommendation is to pay it. So the question then is to the board, how, do you want to proceed with this?
And I think, if you don't mind, Eric, we discussed it, and the large concern is, is this one was turned in in May, and Eric brings up a very fine point in the fact that this is a precedent. You know, now, are the floodgates going to come open? And just because somebody that has a nonprofit, you know, turns in a letter, is there going to be an expectation there? So I definitely understand that concern, and there has to be some administrative oversight on that and decisions that are made within the board. But this has been sitting out there since May, and that's why I made the recommendation.
Well, we delayed it from May because we didn't have.
Well, we didn't have, we didn't have any idea of what we could use it for.
Bad, and we didn't have, we had no idea what we were going to get in May.
We learned in, end of June, I think, is when we started to get even a sense of what we were going to get.
And we have the money now. It's sitting in an account. We do have until 2024 to spend that funds. I wish Water and Sewer would have been at the meeting to give me an idea of how much. That is one of the allowable things to spend enough. So it might be beneficial to hear, well, how much are we going to have to invest in Water and Sewer to get things up to where they need to be? Do we earmark a large portion of this to Water and Sewer to keep that?
To keep the rates.
Keep the rates down. We do want to keep rates as low as possible. But we also have to try to balance that with people that were legitimately harmed. This group, they lost a lot of revenue because of COVID, so that is the other side of these grant.
What about Deerfield paying the other half of that? I liked that idea.
And we were briefed by Ms. Mullen that Deerfield is going, it has been proposed to Deerfield to pay for their revenue expense, or what was it?
I believe their lost revenue.
Lost revenue.
So we're getting one section.
Here you go.
Which was utility-based, and Deerfield's getting a request for another section, which was revenue-based. Is that correct?
That is affirmative.
So we're sort of splitting it.
Yeah. All right.
I'm wondering, so I like that, and I think to what you're saying, Eric, and maybe to help with the President.
Thank you so much.
Can we ask them to come to the board and sort of present? I mean, they sent a letter, but I'd like to know more. Like, what else have they, have they applied grants for other places? Have they tried anything else? Is this sort of, they've done other things, done their homework and said, can you help us, Village of Cambridge? I don't know, I think that'll help sort of weed out some of, to your point, the floodgates. If we have other nonprofits who come in, if they at least do their homework and take the steps, versus just saying, well, we know Cambridge has $166,000. I'm only $4,000 of that. Well, 38 times later, we're out of that money. So it's going to go quickly if we just sort of keep approving it without having these people present it beyond just a letter that says, here's what I want.
Right, so they document what they lost and how, and where were the revenues from previous years to show that this is what they, this is what.
And this letter has some stuff in there. I just, like, what else have they, have they tried any other grants? Because to your point, there are others that are out there, and maybe they don't know. And that's sort of the advice we can give them, is try this.
I'm kind of with you on this one, Wyatt, because I'm looking at, you know, the Cambridge Foundation, and they do this once a year. And they evaluate it, and then they make a determination. Because this could change from year to year to year, depending upon how many you get and how much money is left.
What do we do with the Cambridge Foundation, though? Do we give a presentation to them? When we request money from them?
No.
No, we give them a sheet of paper saying this is what we'd like.
Well, actually, we go down there in person.
No, we don't.
Well.
We submit a application.
I went there last year to drop it off in person, but that's okay.
But it's not a presentation to the foundation.
No, okay.
And there's other projects that, you know, probably haven't been talked about yet, in the village.
My concern is that we don't, you know, run out of money before we run out of project requests. And I just wanted to do it in years. If we've got till 2024, you know, you just say, okay, here's what we've got, evaluated at the last board meeting in December. And then make a determination for that, for all those that came in that year. And then you can go to the next year.
Well, a year ends in July, and this letter was in before July, so.
Well, we've got until 2024, right?
Yeah, they say that the funds can be spent.
But the request wasn't in May.
I understand. It came in before anything had really been set up as far as how we would disperse it. I know it's not a lot of money, but I don't want us to have somebody later on that brings a request, and then we didn't have some of this stuff bought out.
This isn't on the agenda, but another one that we did receive just before the meeting, the library is asking for funds to cover their lost revenues during the pandemic, because they were closed. And there was some discussion also about improving the HVAC system to better handle filtration and things like that. So that also would be qualified for funding through this, because that is a government entity that lost revenues that could offset this. So right off the top, they're asking, I don't know, at least $15,000, and they don't give a timeline of when that is. This request that we have in hand is $4,396 for this 2020 year. Sounds like they're now going to be back up and running, hopefully having shows, bringing in revenue.
Next year.
Next year.
So like you had said previously, that the money is going to go fast. I'd like to hear what Water and Sewer has, because that's a, we want to keep rates down and make sure everything's clean and the way it needs to be. And some of this could offset that.
So the motion you have in front of you is to.
The recommendation, yeah, the recommendation was to disperse the funds in full right now.
Right, or another alternative is to say, okay, we've got this. We'll let them know that we will be reviewing this, and we will have an answer and an amount by no later than December 31st. And that way, everybody who comes in, they get evaluated in that year.
By when, 2023?
By December 31st of 2021.
So you want like a round one?
Yeah, round one. And then just keep doing this for the remaining years that this is open. And then you can evaluate how much money you have.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Do they need this money now to continue to operate? Are they hurting that bad? Or are they going to be okay if they wait until December?
Can I defer that to Lisa? Can you answer that?
Yeah, and I'm speaking as this position, I am a member of the CD Players Board. So they do have some money in the bank still. It's been two years without revenue, without having shows. So their money is being depleted. They do have money in the bank still. Two years without the shows, they're still paying their rent and their insurance and so forth.
There's no moratorium on those funds? Like, can they halt their insurance?
No.
They can't, okay.
No, it's still, they're renting the facility up at the old school. So the insurance still needs to be there, the, you know.
They're still renting it? They're still renting it?
CD Players rents, yeah.
Yeah, but wait, they're not having a show.
But all the costumes are stored, all the set designs, all the equipment, everything is.
I got it.
Are these expenses for just 2020, not whatever's happening this year too, right?
The letter is the expenses from 2020, I believe. I didn't write the letter. I wasn't a part of it. The village president had, the board president had.
I think we should.
I'm not opposed to giving them the money. I'm, I think to Eric's point before, that wasn't actually the recommendation, but what he thought was paying half now and then half later, either end of this year or before then. I'm fine with that for now, just sort of give them a chance to consider other options and better understand Water and Sewer and other things like that.
I also really like the idea of, like, the library and other people coming in front of the board to make their known. Because, you know, just based on your quick introduction to that, there's some, I would have questions about that amount, so.
It was a very rough guesstimate of what they, so it wouldn't necessarily meet the. This has a precedent where they showed the previous year's revenues, expenditures, and then, you know, what they lost, which in one of these League of Municipalities things that's in the Audit and Finance packet, it tells you that they specifically want to see those sorts of things. It's not in this request, so we'd have to get more detail to approve something like that.
Right.
Yeah, but I would have questions about that, and just want to make sure it's being used properly.
Any other questions?
No.
Before we get procedurally, I mean, we've got a recommendation from Audit and Finance. That is to pay the $4,000 right away. Does anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
I can make a motion to pay the amount requested by the players. Yeah.
Okay.
Village Players.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. All right, we've got a motion and a second to pay the $4,000 exact amount.
$396.12.
Okay, this is money, right? Do we have to?
Yeah.
Okay, voice vote, please.
No, roll call.
Uh, roll call. Roll call.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Brianic.
Yes.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Franklin. McNally.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Now, we are going to go back to the agenda on Item 8D, the proposed development. You have the new letter that was sent to you. Now, it differs from what's in your packet, because in the first paragraph, the very last full sentence, the necessary annexation and land development procedures to achieve new development growth. And then as I look at this, the very last paragraph, finally, we also understand that you believe tax incremental financing will likely be necessary in order for this development to reach its full potential. So this was prepared by our attorney, and this was submitted to Mr. Schultz. He and I talked about it, and he was okay with this language, because it included those two items.
Do we need to strongly support, or can we just support?
Which part? That's the last, second to last paragraph.
Last sentence of the second to last paragraph. The village strongly supports the appropriate use of the TIF. I would say that we support inappropriate use of a TIF. I don't, I'm a moderate.
I would agree. It does feel, I don't see the need for the.
Qualifier?
Yeah, the qualifier there.
I don't need to qualify my support. Just regular support.
Support it.
That's all the support.
Either yes or no. I think enough of a, we have an entire paragraph devoted to it. I feel like that's enough of us telling them that we support this, discussing it at least, so.
Mark, I just. Just for clarification, they're going to be using their funds to purchase the 114 acres plus the other acreage, correct?
Todd Schultz will be.
Todd Schultz's money. It has nothing to do with other things that we've talked about.
No, no.
Okay.
Where, where is the strong support? Where are you guys getting?
Uh, yep, thanks, Eric.
Oh, and.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Oh, okay, village strongly support. So you want to take out the word strongly?
I would like to strike the word strongly.
Okay.
I will second that.
All right.
I strongly. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, the letter to, of the proposed development to Westgate Partners. And with the, with the word strongly stricken from the second to last paragraph.
Like, I got something real quick. The attorney wrote this letter, the, from the.
Murphy does, man.
So from the solar intervenor funds? Is that what we're using for this?
No, it wouldn't be this.
It wouldn't be, no.
It wouldn't come from the solar funds. This would be separate village.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to approve this with the exception of the word strongly. Does anybody care to make a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now further discussion?
Give me a second.
All right, go ahead.
Also, baby step forward, Mark. Because there's a lot to work out in this.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we've got a motion and a second for approval of this with the exception of the word strongly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Lisa and I will work on this tomorrow because it's going to be done right away.
Thanks for getting this, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Mark.
I will print it up for you.
Okay, all right. We're bouncing around here like a ping pong ball.
We, we did 9A already.
Okay, now I'm going to go on to fire commission update. I can't really report anything. I'm getting innuendo, but it's just that, it's innuendo. So I'm just going to leave it alone on what I have.
When's your next meeting?
Meeting is in September, yeah, 16th. So we'll, I'll have something for you by then.
What's, Lisa, what's the deadline for, are we already past the deadline of any kind of language for a special election for a referendum this November?
Yeah, we won't.
Okay. I just was curious of the date, so I'm just.
Yeah, no, that.
That was the only thing that was outstanding in my mind.
I had told that to the Chair of the Commission that that had to be done by, I want to say, we had to have everything in by the end of August?
Yeah.
Because there's 90 days with the state, so. Okay, now we're going to move on to the building subcommittee update. Mr. Bruning, anything?
Well, I was, I was there, so.
Go ahead, Ted.
Huh? You were there?
No, go ahead. If you would like to brief, I can tell them what's, what's going to happen this Thursday.
Your first part.
I was not at the meeting, so you were there.
Oh, okay. Well, we, we've heard different, different proposals for the fire department, like moving the EMS to a separate building. And we've discussed that and ran the numbers. Doesn't really make sense to do that. We've talked about putting the weight room up on the, on the mezzanine, which may or may not, it probably doesn't make sense to do it. We should just leave it where it's at. And what I'm, what I'm really getting at, getting to now is, I really think it should, we should approve it. We should go to the Commission and let them know that our, that it should stay as submitted now. There's not, yeah, we can take a stall off and we could save $100,000. But when we need to add that stall on, it's going to cost $500,000. So why don't we just put it in, put it in the proposal to, to just to keep it?
All right, so this was all part of your discussion?
It was.
And it's, it's coming to fruition this Thursday. We're having what could possibly be the final meeting.
That's correct.
And we're going to hash out what the recommendations are. Mr. Bratney presented a proposal and, but as Ted said, it's, it's at minimal savings. So we'll, we'll get to hear him out and then we'll give that proposal to the Fire Commission and they can do with it as they will.
It's just like taking four bathrooms away, Mark. It'd save the taxpayers a dollar on their, what it's going to cost to.
Okay.
So essentially, I mean, whatever comes of it, I guess it's too early. But it feels like essentially what's going to come of it, you're saying, Ted, is we're going to go back in spring of next year and give a higher dollar amount now because we've now lost a year and their expenses have gone up or something.
It's going to happen, it's.
And that's why I, I stand by my position of, you know, we should rebid it out. You know, and there could be some cost savings in rebidding it up.
Is this going to go off a referendum again?
There's a possibility. That, that is one of the recommendations that will be made to the Fire Commission.
But it'll be a higher dollar amount significantly because I think.
If it's with the same.
Our responsibility right now is, what, 1.5 million?
1.65 million.
Yeah.
But that was when it was 6.5.
And everybody knows that the price of the building's going up just by. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Plan, higher, higher price.
Again, we, we will know more on Thursday and we'll be able to present intelligently, you know, what, what is given out on Thursday. But as it stands right now, there's what Keller has presented. There is, there has been some nuanced changes within the discussion, within the, the group. And then, once that is put down through the minutes, we'll push it out to the Fire Commission. And they can do with it what, what they will, you know, but.
I found it interesting, though, Chris, that this same fire station with, with the addition and the square footage was built in Marshall in 2002 for 2.5 million. So that's the prices that have gone up over the years. That's what it costs today.
Okay, all right. We'll look forward to the next update here from the Subcommittee. Let's move on, Energy Subcommittee.
Yeah, so these are, yeah, these are the two things that came out of our last meeting. The first, the intervenor compensation application went in last Wednesday before the deadline. We asked for, we put in a proposed budget of $75,000. It's going to be a couple months until we hear back on what the PSC says and what the dollar amount is that they will give us for sort of recouping some of the funds we put towards this. And with that, because the bulk of the funds that is part of our budget that we're putting forth will happen in the next couple of months, leading up to our, presentation of our findings, essentially our, our concerns in November. We do, I'm coming forth with a recommendation from the Energy Subcommittee to request additional funds for the legal counsel. So we decided upon 60,000 to sort, to not exceed 60,000 with the plan that this would be recompensated with the intervenor grant is the plan. Okay, if there's anything.
But some of these funds, probably are going to go ahead and we're going to have to spend them, like, for expert witnesses and stuff like that prior.
Yeah, that covers both. So it's, so it's 40,000. Our budget for the intervenor grant is 40, a little over 40,000 for legal fees. We're earmarking $35,000 for expert witness, for sort of helping define the growth impact for the solar being right on our doorstep. Questions from, mostly I'm looking at Eric and Chris because the rest of the committee members were at the meeting last week, so.
The only thing I find discouraging is that, you know, some of it, like the experts that we want to bring in, they're getting, they're conflicted out. So we're, we got a.
They got everybody tied up.
Yeah, they do, they do. So between Alliant and MG&E and Invenergy. Okay, all right, thank you for that. Additional funds, legal counsel, covered it all?
Well, I mean, yeah, but I'm asking, we'll need a motion.
Where are we at? Where, right now with expenditures on legal?
It was 75.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten to August.
I think we're on, just under 8,000. I do have to break that out, though, because some of those funds are toward the Schultz.
Westgate.
So some of that will be taken out. So it's probably down closer to about 5,000 through, through July.
I'm making a motion to approve 60,000 for Energy Subcommittee for legal fees. And then 75,000 for the grant, correct?
Well, you don't have to actually approve. The grant, we already went before.
Not to exceed.
Yep.
Not to exceed. Not to exceed 60 right now?
Anybody care to make?
I can second that, Mark.
Okay, Ted's.
That's a part of that.
Okay, further discussion?
They gamble.
Yeah, it is.
So if we don't get the 75,000 you're requesting and we spend it all, it all comes out of the general fund, which as of 2020, we had 210,000 in there, which would leave us with a whopping 135,000. So that's all we would have left in general fund.
In reserve?
Yeah, reserve, sorry, in our reserves, in the.
Oh, we have a choice? Like, what, I mean, I think that's the path to take to accomplish what we want to accomplish. Our mission statement with the Energy Subcommittee is to push them back. And the citizens of Cambridge have spoken loud and clear.
They want that as well, so, you know.
Well, I think these legal fees are, are being utilized for the bullet points that we laid out.
Right.
And not the entire project. That we're, we're using legal fees to protect the village's interests.
Correct, right.
Okay, I just wanted that on the table.
And along with the expert witnesses. I think that our expert, expert witness is going to be necessary.
And the expert witness piece, I will say to add to that, that may help us in the long term, is whatever sort of research is done as part of that could help us long term for updating our, our growth plan, essentially. It is something that is, the data that would go into this, this would be sort of some of the same funds we'd end up spending for that. Obviously, we're spending more because we need to have them actually present and be an expert witness. But any data that's gathered or put together and proposed can be reused for growth planning, which that is coming due in the next couple of years anyways.
I will just say this, and I appreciate where you're at, Eric, especially when we just got done with Audit and Finance. There, there's, there is no other issue that's going to affect Cambridge for the next 50 years.
Than this.
Than this one.
Let's hope not.
Please, no, I don't want any more. This, this is, you know, and I, I was driving into town today and, you know, with what we're talking about and what we're hoping this can happen. And it's trying, we don't, we're not against this solar, we're just against what they proposed as plan. I think we can get some modifications with them. And if, even if it's not successful, folks, we've done the best we could. We didn't just, well.
We stood up for it and.
Yeah, we didn't, you know, we didn't, couldn't find the money to, to mount a defense. I'm not for spending money foolishly. But the law firm has seemed like they have been very diligent, thorough, responsible to this point. Knock on wood, we'll keep going and we will persevere. But I, I think we have to have a little bit of powder. Not that I, I like going in and taking it out of, you know.
Yeah, you could start with the battery story, Mark.
Well, that's another issue, Ted, but let's, let's just go through this. Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brynig?
No.
Geller?
Yes.
Kumbir?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitworth?
Yes.
McNell?
Yes. All right, okay. Thank you, Wyatt. Okay, moving on, correspondence. Don't see anything here, so we should be all right on that one.
Kind of hit it with this letter.
Okay, upcoming meetings. We've got a whole slate of these. August 30th, Economic Development, 31st.
Can I just say on Economic Development quickly that we're having a special guest star? The Jefferson County Economic Development Coordinator?
Consortium, yeah.
Oh, man, wrong word. Um, so, yeah, so close. And she will be here with a presentation, so the, the board is invited. You're always invited, but this will be special guest star day. So feel free to drop in, in your leisure time.
All right, August 31st?
30th.
30th.
August 30th.
30th is Economic Development. Right. Energy Subcommittee, we're going to meet again August 31st.
Tentative.
Tentative.
I'm not going to be here.
Okay. All right, September 8th is the Library Board, September 13th, Plan Commission, the 14th, Village Board. Let's see, September 21st, Energy Subcommittee, and the 21st, Water and Sewer, and the 28th, Village Board, Public Works to be determined. All right, that's what we've got for upcoming meetings. Questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items? Anything you'd like to see covered here in the future?
I'd like to address at some point what Nick presented at some point, you know. Have some sort of discussion, whether that be with legal counsel or whatever. But I want it on the agenda for future.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Next meeting, please, if you've got anything that you would like to, for questions with the Superintendent of our Cambridge Public Schools. She will be coming in that last meeting, so we need to, to get our questions to her. Okay, and then we're going to, we're going to convene into a closed session here.
Do you want to take a break before we do that?
Uh, well, we can, but why don't we?
Does anyone need a break? Ted?
Yeah.
Need a break, Ted?
Oh.
Why don't we do this and then we can convene?
Okay, I will, I will make a.